Time is seven o'clock. I'll call to order the City of Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for February 12th, 2025. Attendances by Zoom or in person at City Hall Auditorium, room 218, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Instructions for Zoom are available online at www.torringtonct.org/zoom. There's a link there to join the meeting. You can call in at 1-646-558-8656. Meeting ID 795-950-7035, passcode 907148. Serving on the commission this evening remotely Diane Carroll, who will be seated this evening, Greg Perisino, Donna Greco is in attendance, myself, Greg Mealy. Also in attendance is our city planner, Jeremy Leifert.
And Starlee just signed as we can see him.
And Starlee Arias is attending also, and he will be a seated member. Moving on to agenda item number three, minutes for approval, A, January 15th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And I got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. Time is 7:01. Moving on to agenda item number four, public hearings, A, re-subdivision. Location, 53 McDermott Avenue. Applicant Scott Olson, proposal, two lot re-subdivision of a 2.41 acre property in local business zone. Serving on the commission this evening is Diane Carroll, Greg Perisino, seated is Starlee Arias, seated is Diane Carroll also, Donna Greco is in attendance, myself, Greg Mealy also in attendance, is our city planner Jeremy Leifert. Commissioner Greco, do you have a legal notice, please?
I do. Planning and zoning commission has scheduled a public hearing on the following application on Wednesday, February 12th, 2025, in the City Hall Auditorium, room 218, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. One, re-subdivision applicant Scott Olson, location 53 McDermott Ave. Proposal two lot re-subdivision of a 2.41 acre property in local business zone. Time of hearing, 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Commissioner Greco. Is the applicant in attendance?
I think they're remote. Galen?
Yes, hi. I'm Galen Semperban, professional engineer here for the application.
Okay. Were the green cards submitted and the sign posted?
Yes, the, my understanding, the applicant took care of the notification to the butters and has posted the sign.
Thank you, sir.
So I did speak with the applicant today. He did say he has the cards, but he couldn't make tonight's meeting. If we leave this open, he's going to bring them for the next meeting.
Okay.
Just so we have them in the record.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
If you're ready, I'll do a quick overview of the project.
Galen, just, I'm sorry to interrupt. Do you want to share here, or should we share your plans?
If you've got the plans, I mean, it's a pretty straightforward little project.
You gotta just hit share. Yeah, yep. Down in Zoom, just hit share at the bottom. There you go. And then click on that site plan. Yep.
Okay.
And hit share on the bottom of that screen.
Go quickly.
Yeah, right at the bottom. Got it. Yep. Right. And then maximize the Zoom window.
There we go.
I'm not sure who's, who's planning this, but it's not one.
There we go.
Yes, you can, so you can.
I'm having trouble getting my, my drawings open here. I'm having trouble getting my drawings open. I'm going to just give you a quick presentation on it without the, trying to open the drawings.
We just had it. Hold on. How's that, Galen?
Okay. There it is. Thank you. The property itself, 53 McDermott Avenue, is on the west side of McDermott Avenue, just south of the, of the large shopping plaza there at the corner with Farley Place. You may recall this project or property. We came in about a year and a half ago to, to, to seek an approval for cannabis retail facility on the property. And that occupies presently the one-story masonry building on the north side. And that would become part, or become part of Lot 1. We are seeking a subdivision to create a second lot on the property, Lot 2. The two proposed lots, Lot 1 with the cannabis facility would be 31,028 square feet, and the second lot would be 74,137 square feet. The property is zoned of local business, which has a 10,000 square foot minimum lot size requirement. So both lots would be conforming. In order to make Lot 2 conforming, the, both lots would have the minimum 80-foot frontage, but in order to allow Lot 2 to be conforming, we would need to remove the small brick building that's set along McDermott Avenue in order to allow the side lot lines for Lot 2 to conform. So we are proposing to remove that building. As part of the subdivision, we also are proposing a right turn out from Lot 1. Presently, the configuration for the two lots is the existing drive on Lot 1 is an entrance-only drive, and the existing driveway that's shown at the south side of Lot 2 is an entrance and an exit. So we are looking, proposing to provide a right turnout for Lot 1 in order to allow it to be a independently functioning lot. In the rear of the property, there is a water quality basin, and there is a water course that comes into that basin and exits off-site. So we have gone to the Inland Wetlands Agency and have, and have obtained their approval for the property. That's kind of the project in a, in a quick nutshell. We are proposing 25 parking spaces to be left on Lot 1 to allow that lot to continue to conform to its minimum parking requirements. And then the remaining parking and area would be allocated to Lot 2. The water quality basin would be, be allocated or become part of Lot 2. And we have shown a drainage rights from Lot 1 onto Lot 2 and a drainage easement to, to allow the storm drainage on, that's presently exists on Lot 1 to continue to function. I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions or go into any more detail on any of the above if you have any questions or want more information.
Thank you, sir. Do any commissioners have any questions?
So this building will be taken?
The, the small one in the front.
Yeah. Cause it can barely, it just barely makes the 80, each lot has to be 80 feet in length along the road minimum, and it barely makes that for the two lots, and it, and it would create a non-conforming situation with the house.
So with that coming down, this is for future development at some point for this lot number two, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Starlee or Greg, you got anything?
Not really. No. You're just looking for the subdivision. You're not going to do it, you're not going to separate the property with any fencing or anything like that, right?
No, not, not at this point. We're just looking to subdivide it.
All right. Scott Olson, on behalf of 53 McDermott LLC, has filed an application for a two lot re-subdivision of, oh, wait, I don't have to read this in. No, not yet.
No.
Sorry. I don't want to waste everybody's time if I just have to do this again.
Right.
We're going to leave it, we're going to leave it open anyway, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Yes. Yeah. So what I, what I will do, I'll just, I'll just briefly read my conclusion. The Conservation Commission has a scheduled meeting on February 25th, 2025, and will, and will review the proposed combination of conservation easements and fee-in-lue amount under subdivision regulation section 5.5.2 and 5.5.3. The Conservation Commission is waiting on updated plans from the applicant to be submitted showing the proposed conservation easement boundaries and an appraisal of the land that is subject of the subdivision request for a fee-in-lue value. I recommend that the commission continue this public hearing to February 26th, 2025, regular commission meeting to allow for a report of the Conservation Commission to be entered into the hearing record.
You want a motion?
Okay. I'll go to the public. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. That includes anyone on Zoom. Would anyone like to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. That includes anyone on Zoom. Being none, the time is 7:13. We, we will continue this public hearing through our next meeting. Do I have a motion for that?
Move to continue.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Time is 7:13. Moving on to agenda item number four, B, public hearing, special exception SE-25-1 in Site Plan 1549. Applicant Fabian Pulasco, location 113 Richard Road. Proposal retaining wall within the 50-foot setback. Serving on the commission this evening is Diane Carroll, seated, Greg Perisino, Starlee Arias, who is seated, Donna Greco, myself, Greg Mealy. Also in attendance is our city planner, Jeremy Leifert. Commissioner Greco, do you have a legal notice, please?
City of Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission, legal notice. The Planning and Zoning Commission has scheduled a public hearing on the following application on Wednesday, February 12th, 2025, in the City Hall Auditorium, room 212, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. One, special except, exception SE-25-1 in Site Plan 1549. Applicant Fabian Pulasco, location 113 Richard Road. Proposal construction of retaining wall within the 50-foot setback. Time of hearing, 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Is the applicant in attendance? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm Fabian Pulasco.
You can move these.
And your address, sir?
113 Richard Road.
Thank you. Want to give us an overview of what you're looking to do, sir?
Yes. So this is some part of an existing project that my wife has. It's, it's a group daycare at a property. So we're intending to renovate our basement. So we previously were approved to open up a hatch door exit in the property that it was within this 50 feet setback from our front property line. But we encountered several problems with this. And mainly is from the safety standpoint of having, having children in that area in the case of, of an emergency, like a fire. Having steps, it'll be a lot more difficult to evacuate that area. So we came out with an idea, a possibility that we can have like a ground level exit towards the back of the house without the need of having any, any steps. It will be like, you know, easier to exit in the case of an emergency. And also by having the stairs there, the fire marshal was, told us that we need to have a sprinkler system in place, which was not a problem, but because we, we are in a well system, we require at least, it was a thousand gallons of water reserve, and that would have taken most of the space that we intended to use it for the, for the daycare. It was, it's just too many complications. It was a little bit over our budget as well, because the pump that they require is, if this has to be like fully fire rated, it was just like about $20,000, just the pump alone. And so we were trying to see if we, we can get this exit. With this exit at ground level, we will not, we will not be required to have the sprinkler system in the building.
All right. What's the, what's the depth of it? Cause what's, what's the height of the retaining wall? Is that like the tallest point?
I think it's going to be a little bit over eight feet.
About eight feet, yeah.
And then they will taper down as, towards the back of the house.
What's the material that would be utilized?
I saw in the plans that the engineer drew, I think it's going to be retaining blocks.
Blocks, okay. All right. Thank you. Any commissioners have any questions at this point?
No.
No, all set.
Jeremy, you got a memo?
Property owner Clarabelle Pulasco has filed a special exception and site plan application for property at 113 Richard Road, assessor's map 101, block 011, lot 022, for approval of retaining wall structures related to a proposed building exit for a group daycare facility within the 50-foot front yard setback. The group daycare facility was approved under previous site plan number 1542 on November 13th, 2024. The applicant is requesting that a special exception approval be granted to allow for a 37.4-foot front yard setback for retaining wall structures for this exit location. The proposed location is for egress directly out of the current daycare room. The proposed front yard setback reduction is allowed by special exception approval under 4.1.9, which allows for approval of a reduction to not less than the existing main dwelling setback. The review of this application is guided by site plan requirements of section 8.4 and the special exception standards in section 8.2. A plan has been submitted titled Boundary Survey, showing proposed improvements, prepared for Fabian Pulasco, number 113 Richard Road, Torrington, Connecticut, prepared by Flynn and Seer Land Survey, Surveying LLC, Berlin, Connecticut, dated January 24th, 2025, one sheet. Staff has previously met with the applicant and discussed this application prior to this meeting. In reviewing the plans and documents submitted, I have the following comments. One, the current front yard setback of the existing home is 15.8 feet at the closest point to the front boundary. The proposed structure addition is 37.4 feet from the front property boundary at the closest point, meeting the requirement of section 4.1.9 of the regulations. Two, upon review of section 8.2 of the regulations, it is my opinion that A, the site design is in harmony with the neighborhood in terms of design, use, scale, and footprint. B, the proposed addition will not cause detrimental effects on traffic circulation and parking. C, the proposal will not have negative effects on surface water or groundwater. Three, a zoning permit is required prior to work commencing on the property. Four, a recently relocated shed on the property is not compliant with the zoning regulations. It will need to be relocated. Five, the footprint of the retaining wall structures may be used in the future for construction of building or home additions within the approved footprint with the issuance of zoning permits. Other staff comments. Economic Development, William Wallach, Economic Development Director, responded in support of the project on January 15th, 2025. Assistant Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, submitted the following comments on January 10th, 2025. Wetlands, there are no regulated activities that would require wetlands review for this proposal. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, this application does not require the submission of a landscaping plan. Lighting, new and existing lighting must comply with section 5.17 of the zoning regulations, which requires full cutoff lighting with no light trespass onto neighboring properties. Signage, there are no signs proposed as part of this application. All future signage will require a signed permit through our office and must conform to section 5.15 of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application was not referred to the Conservation Commission for review. Architectural Review Committee, this application was not referred to the ARC for comment. Engineering, Paul Kunzen, City Engineer, completed his review on January 29th, 2025, and offered the following comment. Drawings need to show heights of retaining walls and need to have an engineered design and certified by an engineer. Police Traffic, Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus completed his application review on January 3rd, 2025, and stated that he has no comments on this application. Fire, Fire Marshal Edward Becetta completed his review on January 21st, 2025, and offered the following comments. We will need a complete set of signed architectural drawings. WPCA, Edward Taucy, WPCA Administrator, completed his review on January 9th, 2025, and noted that there is no sewer service on this property. Building, Building Official Kevin Gillette completed his review on January 3rd, 2025, and offered the following comments. Permits must be obtained for all work to be performed in associated, in association with the proposed change of use. Project review and approvals were submitted without comment by the Torrington Area Health District and Torrington Water Company. Conclusion, I recommend that the commission approve special exception SE-25-1 and Site Plan 1549, 113 Richard Road, for a retaining wall structure within, within the 50-foot front yard setback to allow a 37.4-foot setback with the following conditions. One, the, the commission finds in review of the special exception standards in section 8.2, that the site design is in harmony with the neighborhood in terms of design, use, scale, and footprint. The proposed addition will not cause detrimental effects on traffic circulation and parking, and the proposal will not have negative effects on surface water or groundwater. Two, per comments from Assistant Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus, the property shall conform to all requirements in the regulations for lighting and signage. Three, per comments from Building Official Kevin Gillette, the applicant shall obtain all necessary building permits for the project prior to commencing work. Four, a zoning permit shall be required prior to commencing work related to this approval. An existing storage shed on the property shall be relocated to a compliant location as part of this permit. Five, architectural design drawings shall be submitted for the retaining walls and approved by both the city engineer and fire marshal prior to issuance of zoning permits for construction. Six, a certificate of special exception shall be filed with the city clerk in accordance with CGS 8-3D prior to the approval of zoning or grading permits. Seven, in accordance with section 8.4.3 and 8.4.6 of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved final plan set, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of the site plan sheet SP1 in accordance with section 8.4.3. P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, and engineer's seal and live ink stamp. The Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning or grading permits to begin construction or site work.
Any commissioners have any questions, comments? Okay, I'll go to the public. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. That includes anyone on Zoom. Would anyone like to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. That includes anyone on Zoom. Being none, do you folks have anything else to add, or you're all set?
We're all set.
All set. Okay. Time is 7:26. I declare this public hearing closed. All right, Donna?
I'd like to make motion to approve special exception SE-25-1 in Site Plan 1549, 113 Richard Road, for a retaining wall structure within a 50-foot front yard setback to allow a 37.4-foot setback with the following conditions. One, the commission finds in review of the special exception standards in the section, in section 8.2, that the site design is in harmony with the neighborhood in terms of design, use, scale, and footprint. The proposed addition will not cause detrimental effects on traffic circulation and parking, and the proposal will not have negative effects on surface water or groundwater. Two, per comments from Assistant Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus, the property shall conform to all requirements in the regulations for lighting and signage. Three, per comments from Building Official Kevin Gillette, the application, applicant shall obtain all necessary building permits for the proposed project, for the project prior to commencing work. Four, a zoning permit shall be required prior to commencing work related to this approval. An existing storage shed on the property shall be relocated to the compliant location as part of this permit. Five, architectural slash design drawings shall be submitted for the retaining walls and approved by both the city engineer and fire marshal prior to issuance of zoning permits for construction. Six, a certificate of special exception shall be filed with the city clerk in accordance with CGS 8-3D prior to the approval of zoning or grading permits. Seven, in accordance with section 8.4.3 and 8.4.6 of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved final plan set, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of the site plan sheet SP1 in accordance with section 8.4.3. P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, and engineer's seal and live ink stamp. The Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning or grading permits to begin construction or site work.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
All second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? So moved. Good luck, folks.
Thank you so much.
Good night.
Time is 7:28. Moving on to agenda item number five, Old Business, A, Site Plan 1551, applicant Keith Bodwell, location 114 Old Winston Road. Proposal demolition of existing dwelling and garage and construction of a commercial warehouse building, driveway, parking lot, and associated drainage. Is the applicant in attendance? Thank you.
Name and address. Name is Keith Bodwell, 92 Cream Hill Road, West Cornwall, Connecticut.
Thank you, sir.
Now we get the right drawing up.
Yes. Go ahead. All right. The same plan with some modifications that we've brought last month, and I believe it's had time to be reviewed by all the relevant agencies now. Changes that were made were adding the dumpster pad in this area here. Also, you know, lighting plan, showing that the lighting doesn't go over any of the boundaries. Goes slightly over the front yard setback, but we also have proposing trees along there that'll block that.
We have, we have an allowance for it to go over the entrance, too.
We have, we have an allowance for it to go over the entrance, too.
Third sheet is our landscaping plan. Called out trees and shrubs along the front property line in meeting with the regulations. And there are types that Nate recommended that we use, alternating to allow that if any of them don't.
Sorry, I didn't zoom in on those sheets. Yeah, I don't know which one it is. It's under there somewhere. There you go.
There we go. Now you can see it all by.
They're blocked by the sheer thing.
Yep, we're in the right one. So also, we've got some trees in the rear area. I don't know if you can see on there, the limited disturbance is kind of light on the thing, but there's a line going around. L O D, that's the limited disturbance. So the trees within that, the lightly shaded trees are the ones that would have to be removed for the grading.
So you have an entrance on Old Winston Road coming in.
Correct. Yeah. A single entrance on Old Winston Road.
It's, it's a big wide entrance right now.
Currently, it is extremely wide. It goes on to the next property as well. They kind of share one big wide entrance, including that gravel. The whole front of that gravel, existing gravel parking area is all wide open and continues on to the next property. So we'd be blocking that off and limiting it to one entrance, thirty foot wide entrance, meeting the.
Thank you.
And then we also have on the sheet five, we have our proposed E N S measures. Uh, self fences, topsoil, stockpile. Uh, there was some wetlands across the street, and Nate has reviewed that, and I believe you have a favorable report.
I just got his report today.
Yeah.
Any Commissioners have any questions? No?
Yeah, I just have a, I mean, when I read this in, I just have a few more conditional things for the, for the final plans. I don't know if you saw this yet.
That the one you sent me the other day today?
I just did it today.
Okay, yeah, I think I, I got a.
I guess, I guess you'll hear him for the first time.
Yeah.
All right.
Give me a copy.
Uh, yeah, yeah, if you have an extra. Yep. Actually, there's. You can follow along. Um, Keith Bodwell of Bodwell Engineering and Surveying has filed a site plan application for property at one fourteen Old Winston Road. Assessor's map, two three seven, block zero zero three, lot zero zero four, for a change of use from a single family dwelling to warehousing and construction of a new two hundred by forty commercial industrial warehousing and storage building and associated site improvements. Proposed property improvements include grading and stabilization of slopes on the property, construction of the new building, construction of a seventeen vehicle parking area, and installation of new drainage and landscaping.
Correction to that, it's fourteen now.
Correction to that, yeah. Fourteen, right?
Fourteen, correct.
Access to Old Winston Road is proposed to be improved and narrowed to one entrance, and the exit is thirty feet in width, entrance and exit that is thirty feet in width. The property currently contains a single family dwelling and detached garage that have been vacant and in a state of disrepair for many years. The home and single family use on the property dates back to nineteen twenty, based on the information on the assessor's property card. In recent years, a portion of the northern end of the property has been used for industrial equipment and vehicle parking encroaching from the neighboring property at fifteen seventeen, I should say Old Winston Road, oh, no, fifteen seventeen Winston Road. Both adjacent parcels under common ownership. The property is currently owned by Yield Properties L L C, is one point one eight acres in area and is located in an I industrial zone. The proposed commercial industrial warehousing use is allowed by site plan review under section three point one, subsection nine point three zero, warehousing with interior and exterior storage, and nine point four zero, outside parking of vehicles and equipment. The review of this application is guided by the site plan requirements of section eight point four. A revised plan set has been submitted with the application titled Existing Conditions, Site Plan Lighting, Landscaping, Erosion and Sediment Control Plan, one fourteen Winston Road, Torrington, Connecticut, map two three seven, block zero zero three, lot zero zero four, prepared by Bodwell Engineering and Surveying L L C, revised to February eleventh, twenty twenty five, five sheets. Staff has previously met with the applicant and discussed this application prior to this meeting. In reviewing the plans and documents submitted, I have the following comments. One, I have reviews, I have reviewed a revised parking plan dated February eleventh, twenty twenty five, and it is in compliance with the parking regulations in section five point thirteen. A sign is required to be installed at the handicap parking space on site. Two, there is greater than half an acre proposed to be disturbed for this proposed project. Zoning and grading permits will, will be required to be approved prior to commencing work on the property. A bond for maintenance of the erosion controls on the property will be required to be submitted prior to the issuance of a grading permit, uh, seven point three point three. Uh, three, tree protection details should be included on the final plans for the thirty inch oak specimen tree on, on site. A bond for tree protection for the specimen tree should be included in the E N S bond that is required for the grading permit. Four, the applicant should provide further details on the final plans for the type of screening proposed for the dumpster enclosure. Other staff comments. Economic Development. William Wallach, Economic Development Director responded in support of this project on January fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Assistant City Planner. Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner submitted the following revised comments on February twelfth, twenty twenty five. Wetlands. Permit W P two fifty four has been, I think it should be twenty five four, has been issued for the proposed work. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report from the Inland Wetlands Commission. Landscaping. Provided landscaping plan is compliant with section five point eleven of the zoning regulations. Lighting, a lighting plan using code compliant lighting was reviewed and was found to be acceptable. Any future lighting must comply with section five point seventeen of the zoning regulations, which require full cutoff lighting with no light trespass onto neighboring properties. Signage, there are no signs proposed as part of this application. All future signage will require a sign permit through our office and must conform to section five point fifteen of the zoning regulations. Conservation. The application was not referred to the Conservation Commission for review. Um, other, a permit from the tree warden will be required for any trees removed in the city right of way. Both specimen and significant trees are shown on the plan. Please provide narrative justification for retention of significant trees and show tree protection details for specimen trees. Show limits of clearing for the property. Um, and noting that your, the limits of clearing are on there.
Yes.
So, we probably should talk about the tree, the trees, the trees a little more after, but. Our Architectural Review Committee. This application was reviewed in an A R C meeting on Jan, January thirtieth, twenty twenty five with the following comments. The committee reviewed and was supportive of a plan to remove the blighted and vacant house from the property. The committee reviewed and was supportive of the proposal to build a new warehouse building that is green in color, and the proposal for the parking lot plantings and other landscaping and lighting on the property. Dumpster locations were discussed, and a suitable alternative location was identified that provides the best access and visual location. The committee noted the industrial nature of the surrounding properties and were of the opinion that the building style and color match the surround, match the surrounding structures and generally is an improvement to the neighborhood. The committee also noted that there are no current proposals for signage, but that the address identification number should be in a prominent location on the front of the building. Mr. Kunsens noted that the utility should be clearly noted on the plans, and Mr. Leifert noted that the landscaping or final type or final type of stabilization on the, on the hillside to the rear of the building should be noted on the plans. Potential future Sioux Grossman Greenway Trail locations nearby were discussed and the need to improve and clean up Old Winston Road in general. The committee agreed that the project is in general harmony with the designs of other buildings in this area of the industrial zone. The committee voted to make a positive recommendation on the proposed project and change of use to the Planning and Zoning Commission with the comments as noted above. The A R C minutes have been made part of the file record. Uh, Torrington Area Health District. Gabrielle Russo, T A H D Sanitarian, submitted the following response on January sixteenth, twenty twenty five. Has there been testing for asbestos and lead? W P C A, Edward Tausi, W P C A Administrator, provided comments on January fifteenth, twenty twenty five, requiring that a sanitary sewer discharge permit be obtained for this project. Uh, Building. Building Official Kevin Gillette offered the following comments for this application on January fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Building Department permits must be obtained for all work performed under Connecticut State Building Code. Permit applications must include complete sets of I B C section one oh seven construction documents prepared by a Connecticut licensed registered design professional. The property was reviewed and approved without comment by the city engineer, one twenty nine, twenty five, Police Traffic Division, one fifteen, twenty five, and Torrington Water Company, one twenty three, twenty five. No comments were submitted for this application by the Fire Marshal's Office. The applicant should reach out to the Fire Marshal to, to ensure appropriate code requirements are met. Conclusion. I recommend that the commission approve Site Plan number fifteen fifty one for a change of use from a single family dwelling to a commercial industrial warehouse and storage, storage building use, construction of two hundred by forty storage building and associated site improvements in an I industrial zone with the following conditions. One, per W P C A comments of January fifteenth, twenty twenty five, the applicant shall obtain a sanitary sewer discharge permit prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Two, per comments from the Torrington Area Health District on January sixteenth, twenty twenty five, proper testing for lead and asbestos shall occur prior to demolition of the existing structures on the property. Three, per January fifteenth, twenty twenty five, comments from Building Official Kevin Gillette. The applicant shall obtain all necessary building permits for the project. Four, the applicant shall follow comments of Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant Planner, outlined in his February twelfth, twenty twenty five, review comments regarding landscaping, lighting, and signage and tree protection. Five, an A D A compliant parking sign shall be noted on the final plans and installed at the proposed A D A parking space. Six, the commission approves the removal of significant trees labeled for removal on the plans as necessary for development of the site. The thirty inch oak, as depicted on the plans, shall be protected as well as other significant trees as indicated. Tree protection details shall be added to the final plans for the thirty inch specimen oak tree. Seven, details on the type of proposed screening around the dumpster pad shall be added to the final plans and approved by the city planner. Eight, approval from the city tree warden shall be required prior to removal of any trees in the street right of way for Old Winston Road. Nine, per recommendations of the Architectural Review Committee at their January thirtieth, twenty twenty five, meeting, an address identifier shall be in a prominent location on the building facing Old Winston Road as well as any future freestanding signage. Uh, ten, anti-tracking installations shall be maintained at the property entrance during construction. Tracking on the, on the paved portion of the access drive or public street shall be cleaned at the end of each workday during project construction. Eleven, zoning, zoning and grading permits shall be required prior to commencing work on the property. An erosion and sedimentation control bond shall be required to be submitted with the grading permit application. Tree protection bonding shall be added to the grading permit bond for the specimen tree identified on site. Twelve, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved final plan set, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of the site plan sheet, in accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, an engineer's seal, and live ink stamp. Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to, to approval of zoning or grading permits to begin construction or site work.
Thank you, Jeremy. Uh, Keith, just a note. I'm looking at sheet five of five that's still up. Yield Industries, Yield is spelled incorrectly on air.
Oh, yeah. All right, I will fix that.
Yeah, maybe on all the prints, I don't know.
Yeah, it's probably on all of them.
Yeah, because you copy and paste, but just. Any Commissioners have any questions? No? Anything else to add? You're good, Keith.
Okay.
Go ahead, Donna.
Like to make a motion to approve Site Plan Application Number fifteen fifty one. Applicant Keith Bodwell, Bodwell Engineering, location one fourteen, Old Winston Road. Proposal change of use from a single family dwelling to a commercial slash industrial warehouse and storage building use, construction of two hundred by forty foot storage building and associated site improvements in an I industrial zone with the following conditions. One, per W P C A comments of January fifteen, twenty twenty five, the applicant shall obtain a sanitary sewer discharge permit prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Two, per comments from the Torrington Area Health District on January sixteen, twenty twenty five, proper testing for lead and asbestos shall be occur, shall occur prior to demolition of the existing structures on the property. Three, per January fifteen, twenty twenty five, comments from Building Official Kevin Gillette. The applicant shall obtain all necessary building permits for the project. Four, the applicant shall follow comments of Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant Planner, outlined in his February twelve, twenty twenty five, review comments regarding landscaping, lighting, and signage and tree protection. Five, an A D A compliant parking sign shall be noted on the final plans and installed at the proposed A D A parking space. Six, the commission approves the removal of significant trees labeled for removal on the plans as necessary for development of the site. The thirty inch oak, as depicted on the plan, shall be protected as well as other significant trees as indicated. Tree protection details shall be added to the final plans for the thirty inch specimen oak tree. Seven, details on the type of proposed screening around the dumpster pad shall be added to the final plans and approved by the city planner. Eight, approval from the city tree warden shall be required prior to removal of any trees in the street right of way for Old Winston Road. Nine, per recommendations of the Architectural Review Committee at their January thirty, twenty twenty five, meeting, an address identifier shall be in a prominent location on the building facing Old Winston Road as well as any future freestanding signage. Ten, anti-tracking installations shall be maintained at the property entrance during construction. Tracking on the paved portion of the access drive or public street shall be cleaned at the end of each workday during project construction. Eleven, zoning and grading permits shall be required prior to commencing work on the property. An erosion and sedimentation control bond shall be required to be submitted with the grading permit application. Tree protection bonding shall be added to the grading permit bond for the specimen tree identified on site. Twelve, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved final plan set, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of the site plan sheet, in accordance with section eight point four point three point P of zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman, a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, and engineer's seal and live ink stamp. The Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning or grading permits to begin construction or site work.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Diane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, New Business. A, Site Plan Number fifteen fifty, applicant Eric Spencer. Location, eighty White Wood Road. Proposal, four hundred square foot accessory apartment in the basement. Is the applicant in attendance?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Eric Spencer, eighty White Wood Road, Torrington, Connecticut.
Thank you. You want to give us a brief overview of what you're trying to do? We have your plan up.
Yeah, I see it now. But pretty much, I'm the contractor here. She's the homeowner, and the, the object is to basically take the, um, unit in the, in the basement and make it a, um, stay compliant, and we want to build a hallway to make the, the, the space in the, in the basement for a, um, an in-law, like a in-law suite.
Okay.
Then there's another drawing here for the, the space upstairs, and basically want to remove a wall to make the, the space upstairs a part of the main house. And we're going to, um, I'm going to create two walls here where, always to the far left, where the drawing that says main house, always to the far left, that's going to be for, uh, uh, storage and utility. And basically.
If you're showing something, we're not seeing it.
It's, oh, it's there.
Yeah, it might not be on the share, though.
All right, hold on.
Just, just an FYI.
You just got to open, yeah, there you go. Just click on Greg's face on, when it.
Just click on Greg's face on, when it, when that comes up. Just click on the zoom, click on Greg, click, no, click on Greg's, yeah, so you see when it comes up? Go and click on Greg, there you go. And then hit share and you should be able to do it.
There you are, Greg.
And now click on the, yeah, there you go. Then hit share. Boom. Better?
Okay, great.
All right.
Okay, so I'll start over. So basically we have, we have two drawings here. The first drawn is going to be always to your far left, which is the main house. And the, um, the current space is there now, we have a a current, um, main room that's like was a part of the garage. And so the, the object here is going to be to remove a wall that's currently there and we're going to put up a new wall, always see it far left where there's, it says door, wall to add, and then another wall to add. And kind of top, I guess the top center, there's a wall there currently that we're going to actually take down and remove. So this is to help make the, the unit that's there now a part of the main house. The second drawing, always see it far right, is a drawing of the basement. So what's basically going on down in that area, I have added a, um, kind of, you know, over to your left, it says wall to add nineteen foot wall, the object here is to add a wall with a doorway so that you come into that unit or come into the hallway. And then at the top, you see that there's a door that is an exterior door, so if you come in from the backyard through that exterior door, you're going to enter that hallway. And then on your right hand side is going to basically be a living area.
Yep.
Okay.
Our members are covering up some of the plan. Do you have a means of egress window in that bedroom? At all?
Um, there is not an egress window in that bedroom.
That may be something to, to address with the building department.
You have to discuss that with the building department and then if, if you add something, you could always give us, uh, it's really minor, really minor changes from our standpoint. You can just note the, note, if they make you do something, you can note the window on there or any, anything you add.
Okay.
You're above grade there? Or you're just shut down?
Hmm, I'm not really sure.
I think the, so you're at, you're at, it's a walkout, right? So you're at.
On that side there.
Yeah, and then, and then it kind of goes into the embankment as you go, the house does.
All right. It's just something to keep in mind.
Okay.
Any commissioners have any questions?
No.
No.
Jeremy, you got a memo?
Yep.
Please.
Um, Eric Spencer has filed, filed a site plan application number fifteen fifty on behalf of property owner Tiffany Erizari for eighty White Wood Road, assessor's map one thirty three, block zero, zero, four, lot zero, zero, five, to convert lower level living space into a four hundred square foot accessory dwelling unit. The property is currently owned by Tiffany Erizari is zero point two six acres in area and is located in the R ten S single family residential zone. The primary use on the property is a single family dwelling. One interior accessory dwelling unit is allowed in the R ten S residential zone that is accessory to a single family dwelling by site plan approval under zoning regulations, section three point one, subsection one point two five and section five point one accessory apartments. The A D U may not exceed thirty percent of the floor area of the principal dwelling unit and also must have a minimum floor area of four hundred square feet. The review of this application is guided by the site plan requirements of section eight point four. Staff has previously discussed this application with the applicant prior to this meeting. This application has been submitted to bring zoning enforcement issues for apartment conversions into compliance with the zoning regulations. The enforcement history has been added to the application file. In reviewing the plans and documents submitted, I have the following comments. One, I recommend that a waiver of submission of an engineered site plan be approved in accordance with section eight point four point four of the regulations. There is no exterior work proposed on the property. Hand sketches of the proposed floor plan for the A D U have been provided by the applicant. Two, the current gross floor area of the main single family home is, uh, thirteen hundred five square feet in accordance with the current assessor's property card. Thirty percent of the square footage of the main home is three hundred and ninety-one square feet. The requirement for the size of the A D U under section five point one of the regulation is a minimum of four hundred square feet. The proposed square footage of the A D U is four hundred and three square feet per layout sketch submitted by the applicant. The proposed A D U size and location is compliant with the zoning regulations. Pending additional proposed construction to add dividing walls between the main dwelling and the A D U. Three, parking on the property is compliant for the A D U. Four, there has been construction of additional separate living space within an attached garage in the home. The zoning and building departments discuss steps to bring this space into compliance with the owner at the property. A floor sketch has been provided to bring this space into compliance. I recommend that this work occur as a condition of approval for this application. Five, on the floor plan, hand sketches provided. The applicant should indicate outer dimensions of the proposed rooms as well as existing walls and proposed new walls, so it is clear where the new construction is proposed and those are, those are updated. I did this last week, so. Um, other staff comments, economic development, William Wallach, Economic Development Director, completed his review on January fifteenth, twenty twenty five and stated that he has no concerns with the application. Assistant City Planner, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, submitted the following comments on January twenty third, twenty twenty five. Wetlands, there are no regulated activities that would require wetlands review for this proposal. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, this application does not require submission of a landscaping plan. Lighting, new and existing lighting must comply with section five point seventeen of the zoning regulations, which requires full cutoff lighting with no light trespass onto neighboring properties. Signage, there are no signs proposed as part of this application. Conservation, this application was not referred to the Conservation Commission for review. Architectural Review Committee, this application was not referred to the ARC for review. W P C A Edward Towsey, W P C A Administrator, replied on January seventeenth, twenty twenty five and noted that a sanitary sewer discharge permit will be required for the proposed A D U. Building, Building Official Kevin Gillette offered the following comments uh, for this application on January thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Building Department permits must be obtained for all work. The applications were reviewed, reviewed and approved without comment from the Torrington Area Health District and Torrington Water Company. No comments were received for this application from the Fire Marshal's Office. Conclusion, I, I'm, I recommend that the commission approve site plan number fifteen fifty to construct an interior four hundred and three square foot accessory dwelling unit in the lower level of a single family dwelling at eighty White Wood Road subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall obtain a zoning permit prior to commencing construction. Two, the applicant shall obtain a sanitary sewer discharge permit prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy per W P C A comments of January seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Three, the commission waives the requirements for submission of an engineered site plan per zoning regulations, section eight point four point four of the regulations, since there is no exterior construction proposed. Four, the applicant shall update a final set of hand sketches noting existing and proposed new walls to be constructed within the dwelling prior to the issuance of zoning permits for this project. Five, per December thirty first, twenty twenty four comments from Building Official Kevin Gillette, the applicant shall obtain all necessary building permits for the project.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do any commissioners have any questions?
No.
You have anything further to add? You're good. Go ahead, Donna.
Like to make a motion to approve site plan fifteen fifty to construct an interior five hundred and three square foot accessory dwelling unit in the lower level of a single family dwelling at eighty White Wood Road, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall obtain a zoning permit prior to commencing construction. Two, the applicant shall obtain a sanitary sewer discharge permit prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy per W P C A comments on January seventeen, twenty twenty five. Three, the commission waives the requirement for submission of an engineered site plan per zoning regulations, section eight point four point four of those regulations, since there is no exterior construction proposed. Four, the applicant shall update a final set of hand sketches noting existing and proposed new walls to be construction, constructed within the dwelling prior to the issuance of zoning permits for the project. Five, per December thirty first, twenty twenty four comments from Building Official Kevin Gillette, the applicant shall obtain all necessary building permits for the project.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Diane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Good luck, folks. Moving on to agenda item number seven, correspondence, A, zoning and blight violation update. I believe everybody has it in their packet. Any comments, Jer?
None for me. Any, anybody's got anything for me?
Moving on to agenda item number seven, B, discussion solar project West Hill Road.
Um, so we're going to add, um, the, the applicant, the solar project applicant, um, to the next meeting and they're going to give us about a ten or fifteen minute presentation. Um, so if, if anyone wants to ask any questions of them, I guess just be prepared to ask whatever, whatever we could think of at that meeting.
Very good.
Um, they, uh, they did say that they are, they've kind of moved up their date a little, they're not going to, um, submit to the sighting council till March.
Any questions?
No.
Good. All right, time's eight oh one, moving on to agenda item number eight, adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Diane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.